We're ready. I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Thursday, February the 7th, 2013 at 5:00 PM. If I can have a roll call, please?
Director Fletcher?
Here.
Uh, Dr. Head?
Here.
Director Corolla?
Here.
Mr. Corolla?
Here.
Vice President Gentry?
Here. Okay, since we are all here, this part is, now it's time for public participation. Individuals be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for the public comment on agenda items will be provided at any time, at the time, excuse me, they are discussed by the board with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Is there anybody from the public that has anything they want to speak to, other than what's on the, yes, what would you like to speak to tonight?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Um, I'd just like to know if, if somewhere soon, we could find out what the cost of the move was from the old, from the old building to the new building and its entirety, how much it costs. I've heard several rumors around town, and I'd just like to know what the, what the actual cost of, of acquiring this building and building the shop and stuff is, as opposed to what you got for the other one.
I think, per request of Director Kellogg, some of those numbers are going to be provided real soon, so.
Okay, and the other thing that's come to my attention is, is it was, it was said to a, to a citizen here in town, a ratepayer, that the water was cheaper than Chico, and so, the question that, that I got from him was, is, uh, is the actual water cheaper, or is it, or is it the, uh, is it the total fee? Because, of course, they got sewer and stuff on theirs, so.
Well, I'm gonna let George, I'm gonna let George speak to that, we are a-
Uh, certainly, uh, depends on how much a person uses, so, I believe we have a rate comparison calculator on our website.
Okay.
So depending on what you use, you can look how much that would cost you in other districts.
Well, their bill was thirty-three dollars, and their actual water usage was less than four dollars, so, there's a lot of add-ons to it that's, that's there, and we were just trying to figure out how it compared with other water districts for the cost of the water.
Well, I'll double check and make sure it's still up and running, but I believe there's a comparison on our website.
Okay.
We try to keep it up to date.
All right, thank you, those are two questions, thank you.
You're welcome. At this point, I am going to turn the meeting over to Vice President Larry Duncan. Surprise.
Yeah, right, surprise.
I don't think it'll be proper for me to be the, the person conducting this meeting tonight, um, so, I am going to recuse myself of that, and, um, go on to Larry. I do have a statement that I would like to read before we really get into this. Um, I was considering going over to the podium there, but that just makes you all turn your heads, so I think I'd rather just sit here and face you this direction. So, uh, before Larry takes over, unless he wants to do something right before I do this, I've got a little statement that I'd like to read to you all. So, um, "I called this meeting tonight in an effort to maintain true transparency and to get out in the open and address the questions raised in respect to the sales transaction between the district and Miller Glass. Miller Glass received a request for bid from Jim Ladrini with respect to vinyl windows needed to complete the corporation yard offices over here to our north. A week or so, uh, we performed that bid, Miller Glass performed that bid, a week or so later, Miller Glass was informed that we had been the low responsible bidder out of the parties that the bids had been requested from. I can only assume that there were three, including Miller Glass, that the district had to choose from. Um, the manager of the Paradise store was going to proceed with the order, um, but me having the best interest of the district in mind, and since I happen to have had a meeting that exact night, um, here at the district with a committee meeting that we had going here, um, I said I was gonna go ahead and take a look, uh, final look at the plans, and see if the direction of the windows, the way they were sliding, um, would best serve the employees for ventilation. I looked at the plans, made some changes, sent those changes over to the manager of the Paradise store, and informed Mr. Ladrini, um, that I had made some changes to the directional slides, but in no way did that affect the pricing Mitch had done. He said he trusted my judgment and to have the order proceed with. The windows, I believe, arrived around the fourth week of January, and Mr. Ladrini was contacted for delivery of said product. Being on time and within budget as Miller Glass has a reputation for being, we delivered the windows on January 31st at Mr. Ladrini's request. That same morning, while working late almanor, um, I received a voicemail from David Steffensen, one of our other district lawyers, relating to District, to Director Kellogg's concerns of this sale. I immediately called David back and received the facts about what info he was requesting. It appeared to me that Director Kellogg was under the impression that I was a commissioned employee and would receive some financial gain from this sale. I am a salaried employee and receive no such compensation. I believe that even though we had not talked about this sale in open forum, and it was not a board decision in regards to the final sale, that every director, including Director Kellogg, and with the exception of Director Fletcher, who just joins, joined the board in December, had knowledge that Miller Glass would be considered for the open bid process in the sales, in the sale of these eleven windows. Miller Glass has provided goods and services to the district a long time before I was with the district, and maybe hopefully a long time after, um, and we do not get every contract, since we are not always the low bidder. Director Kellogg and the rest of the directors are aware of this, as we sometimes see checks issued to Miller Glass and other glass shops in the monthly check register. If Director Kellogg had a problem with Miller Glass being included in this bid, we would have gladly discussed at an earlier date our involvement, and most likely our withdrawal from the transaction. Director Kellogg knows I have knowledge of this project and its workings as we were on the corp yard building committee together. This is why I distanced myself from the quotation part and final sale of these windows. Neither I nor the district realized that by me just having this minimal part of involvement in this sale, it could possibly be taken as a technical violation of Governmental Code 1090. It has since been implied by Director Kellogg that award of this sale to Miller Glass is in some way, was done to influence future political decisions that I would be making on behalf of the district. I find this to be a distasteful attack on my character and is completely unacceptable. I was born and raised in Paradise, I love the community I live in, I took this job with the PID to better the district in current and future times to come. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Okay, so now that's mine, huh? Okay, well, I have, this is all new to me, it's nothing, I have, I don't even, I read what the attorney said and everything, but I'm, I'm here to learn too. Anyway, so the new business, discuss agreement with Miller Glass to provide windows for the new corporation yard, building project in its conformity with Section 1090 of the California Government Code. I guess, turn it over to Mr. Barber?
Yeah, I just have, just to kind of follow up on what Director Corolla said, this was a, a bid process, there was three bids submitted for this project. Miller Glass's bid was fifteen ninety-three thirty-two, Jean's A1 glass bid was two thousand and eighty dollars, and, uh, Holes NorCal window and door was twenty-one eighty-four sixty-seven. So, it, this, followed the procurement policy, we go out to bid, get at least three bids, award it to the lowest bidder. Um, I concur with Sep, um, it was my understanding that if there's no financial gain for the, for him as a director, that as long as we went through the open process of bidding, shouldn't be a problem. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dustin.
Okay, I have, uh, hopefully I have enough copies of a, some government code provisions. I made ten, do you need more?
I think I have about fifteen here.
So, yeah. I'm gonna go with both.
I'm sure.
So, what you're looking at is Section 1090 and Section 1091 of the Government Code. Um, I've underlined a couple provisions. Section 1090 is the, is the provision in the Government Code that says, a member of a legislative body cannot have a financial interest in a, in a contract. And, that makes sense. Um, I underlined a couple words that, uh, may upon first reading not, not be as broad as you might think. Um, so the first phrase, financially interested. Um, what, what Director Corolla said is, he, he's not receiving commission, he's a salaried employee, he really had no direct financial gain by selling the windows. Well, you look into the cases, and it's actually an extremely broad interpretation of what it means to be financially interested, so it's not just direct benefits, it's indirect benefits too. And so the theory is that by awarding a contract, even when this, a particular person is an employee, that that somehow creates greater job security, and it allows the company to stay in business, and the employee to remain employed. So, that's the theory. So, it's a very broad interpretation. The, the same can be said of the phrase, made by them. Uh, the contract technically was not made by the board, it was made under the procurement policy, which is a policy that was adopted by the board for purchases involving less than five thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
So, the district has, I don't know, a hundred of these every month, of very small purchases from a matter of mere dollars up to a couple thousand dollars, and this particular purchase of glass fell within that exception. Well, so, the fact that the contract was not technically made by the board, again, this is a very broad interpretation, and what the courts have said is, if the contract is made by any delegated authority, and in this case, it could be argued that, that procurement policy was a delegated authority, so, the fact that Mr. Ladrini, a district employee, uh, operating under the procurement policy, entered into the arrangement with Miller Glass, it could still be argued that this falls within 1090, okay? So, that's, this is the rule, 1090 is the rule. If you flip the page, 1091 is the exceptions to the rule, and the legislature recognized that there will be times when there is a remote interest, that it's not millions of dollars we're talking about, it's, it's a pretty attenuated interest in a, in agreement. And, uh, so, so again, I've highlighted some words, some provisions here, to help you understand it. And in subdivision A, uh, there's basically two parts to subdivision A. The first part is notice. When there's an agreement entered into that arguably falls in Section 1090, the rule, then you need to comply with section, subsection A here, and that, first part of that is provide notice. And this notice, I think, could be anything from Director Corolla stating for the record that he's an employee of Miller Glass, and that Miller Glass intends in the future to possibly provide material to the district. And, so, so the notice could be as informal as that, or it could be something much more formal, like a, a written policy of the district that, that recognizes the employment of Director Corolla. Uh, the second part of subdivision A is that when you have a potentially interested contract, you, the board needs to approve it, and it needs to be authorized, approved, or ratified. And so, that, that to me says, the board could approve it beforehand, at a board meeting, or it could ratify after the fact. Um, so, flip the page, and we go to Sub B, and Sub B2 and Sub B3, and this is where we get into really the nitty gritty of whether there's an exception that applies. And so, let's go to two, for example, two has five parts. The contracting party, in this case, Miller Glass, has ten or more other employees, and it does. Two, the officer was an employee or agent of that contracting party for at least three years prior to taking office, and Director Corolla was an employee for more than three years. Three, the officer owns less than three percent of the shares of stock of the company, and Director Corolla knows, owns no stock in Miller Glass. Four, the employee or agent is not an officer or director of the contracting party, and again, that's correct, uh, Director Corolla is not an officer or director of Miller Glass. And the last part is, uh, the director did not directly participate in formulating the bid. Now, what does it mean to directly participate? And if we ask everybody in the room, probably everybody's gonna have a slightly different answer. And this is where confusion is, this is where lawyers make a bunch of money, uh, it, it, nobody really knows. There's, what Director Corolla said is, he was aware of the bid, he made a couple suggestions, then handed it off to somebody else at Miller Glass. It's possible that that is enough to directly participate in formulating the bid. It's possible, which would mean that this exception wouldn't apply. And, the, the exception in three is very similar, you see that it has the directly participate language, it also has a clause in there that's primary management capacity. Again, legal phrasing, nobody knows what it means, but if Sep is a manager of Miller Glass, it may kick him out from him being eligible under this exception. So, I can't say definitively whether there was a violation or not. What I can say is, there's enough here that we should fix it in the future and make sure that there's no question, that there's no violations. So, what I think we need to do, and what I'll recommend to the board, is that Director Corolla have a written statement, and we could put it on the agenda for another meeting, that outlines his, uh, position in Miller Glass. It'll, uh, state that, um, he will not have any role in formulating bids, um, in the future, and then, uh, notwithstanding what the district's current procurement policy says, we need to have those contracts that Miller Glass has awarded come to the board, and, uh, Director Corolla would have to abstain from voting on that, and it would be up to the other directors to decide whether they wanted to award the contract to Miller Glass. Uh, so, that, that will be my recommendation, I can obviously assist the, the staff in, in putting it on paper, and, uh, the board will be able to consider it at a later meeting.
Are you saying that if we considered it at a later meeting, that would be in effect the board ratifying what has already occurred, and then it would be a legal contract?
No, no, I think this is for contracts moving forward.
Okay.
Question, we had an ethics, uh, program, which was given by your office, and in that meeting, Mr. Corolla asked if there was any problem with that, with his company bidding on it, and we were all told that there was no problem.
There isn't, in theory, provided you follow these procedures, so.
But isn't that sort of a notification to the board that Miller Glass is bidding?
Absolutely, I, I mean, every, Director Corolla wears his Miller Glass colors proudly, I think we've all known that he's an employee. Um, it's just, we need to make sure in the future that there's no question, that this is legitimate, the district is getting a, a bid that is legitimate, and there's not any unfair advantage, those types of things.
And what was the aspect of the procurement policy that required Miller Glass, that, that particular section, well, forbid, was it the amount being more than a thousand, or what, what's the?
More than a thousand.
Oh, it is more than a thousand?
Must be a formal.
Well, and, if I follow what Dustin sings correctly, what the policy going forward would be, and it would be generic, not just for Sep, because it would carry forward into the future, it would go in a generic form, if a director is an employee of a company that may contract with the district, they need to make a statement, it's saying they're not going to be involved, and they won't personally benefit, and that all few contracts that they bid on will have to come to the board for approval regardless of, of, um, size, just to keep it clean and transparent.
And, contracting with the district, is that really a formal contract, or is it the fact that we stopped into Miller Glass and picked up a two-by-two sheet of glass and paid him twenty bucks and came over here?
That's an agreement. An agreement does not have to be in written form, so I think this was probably a purchase order.
So that would be, that would be contracting with the district?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I just want to bring up something that I think is kind of a ludicrous example, taking this to the far ends. Have we not in the past gone down to Safeway and purchased a bunch of sandwiches for, to feed the board meeting or public, or, or, uh, an employee function of what was going on?
Yes.
In effect, that was a contract between Safeway and, and the district. So what you're saying is, is that if Larry happened to be a stockroom clerk working for Safeway, that we could not just go down to Safeway and buy those sandwiches, we would have to have a board approval to purchase a hundred and ten dollars worth of sandwiches to bring it in here and feed this group, or go to Albertson's or someplace else?
Yeah, what, what we would do is, we'd walk through this, and we'd, we'd start with 1090, what's the rule? Okay, he's an employee, he's got an interest in continued employment, then we'd go through the, to the exceptions, and provided there was notice and, and the things in Sub A, the difference in your hypothetical, you said he's a store clerk, so I don't think he's making the sandwiches, so he didn't directly participate.
What if he stocked the bread?
Did you make the windows?
If he brings the bread to the deli.
But your point is a fair one, I mean, these, that's why you, you see this kind of stuff in the news all the time. Districts violating the Brown Act, for example, there's, a lot of times, there's not intent to do that. Occasionally there is, but most of the time, it's an innocent mistake, not done with, with any malicious intent, just because there's a lot of laws out there, they're complex, and it happens. So, so the key is, you know, in this case, or the Brown Act, anytime there's a, um, what I consider a technical violation, or possibly a technical violation of the law, acknowledge it, and then in the future, fix it so that there's no questions.
Several of my clients deal with the district, am I, is there a problem with me because my client is dealing?
No, no, that's enough separation to where.
Okay, so I'll make sure. Okay, uh, is, is any, any of the, uh, directors have any more questions of the staff?
I'd like to make some comments.
Yeah, we'll make comments afterwards, right. Uh, anybody, anybody, any more questions of the staff from the directors?
Well, I, I have a big question, what are we doing here? What are we going to accomplish tonight?
Well, um, are you directing this at me?
Yes.
Because, I don't know that I'm the right one to ask that.
Well, I mean, we're here, and when we got a big legal concern, from my rough estimate, we're spending about five thousand dollars of the district's money, and that means we're spending five thousand dollars of ratepayer money, taking a look at investigating this fifteen hundred dollar window contract. I don't like spending money like that.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, so, what are we going to accomplish tonight? Are we going to ratify this contract, fix it in the future, and move forward, or are we going to persecute this to the full extent of the law here, and, um, put Sep in jail, or, what are we gonna do?
The reason we're here is because of this getting started, staff can't proceed, we need direction. So we need direction from the board, there's an opportunity to go into closed session to get potential other questions answered of legal staff that maybe not's appropriate here, and then you, as a board, need to tell staff, this is how we're gonna proceed with this contract, and then give us direction of what to do in the future.
Right, I think we need to get down to the nitty gritty legal, uh, wrangling on this, and, and let us ask our stupid questions in closed sessions, and figure out what we can and cannot do.
Okay, do you have any questions of staff?
Questions of staff, I have one of Duncan, Dustin.
Dustin, okay.
Dustin's staff.
Um, you told me on the phone, when I was asked about this, what the legal ramifications were, and what, and a paper came out of legal opinion of yours, it's basically the same thing you told me on the phone, that all the directors got with email. Now, I think I'm still free to talk about what we talked to, about on the phone, without it be, and I'm not bound by the document that came out.
Well, as far as options moving forward, in my opinion, it involves potential litigation, so I, I wanna talk about that in a closed session.
No, I agree with you, that, that we talked in closed session, this had to be talked about open session, for the public being here, and so forth, about the violation, and so, that's the part I want to talk about. And I, I want to make sure that nobody's sitting here, other directors, or, or management refers to that letter and says you can't talk about it.
Well, the letter I wrote, it keeps being referred to, I drafted an opinion letter, it's, it's privileged information, it's privileged until a majority of the board decides to waive the privilege. So, Bill, I would say refrain from quoting my letter, um, unless the majority of the board decides to make a vote.
Okay, I'm gonna go this way, I'm going to have to speak to it, because if I don't speak to it publicly, then the whole thing goes away, the information I have. The, it, the way it's being handled right now, and what's with coming, I'm gonna have to speak about it now, and I will.
So you're saying you're gonna go contrary to legal advice, trying to protect the district, and you're going to ignore that, and go ahead for the benefit of Bill Kellogg, and talk about what he tells you is inappropriate?
No, we're supposed to have questions to him and not commentary right now?
That was a question to you.
No, I'm not.
It was a question, wasn't it? There was a question mark on the end.
Okay, well, I, right now, I don't think, under legal thing, I don't think we should talk about the opinion at all right now until after we've had closed session, okay?
Bill's getting ready to talk about it.
So whatever you do, don't. Now, now, I wanted this to get out of the way, now I want to hear from the public. So before we go into closed session to discuss possible litigation, is there anyone from the public who'd like to talk about this?
I got a question, because this is ridiculous, this is completely ridiculous. We try hard, I know Sep, someone's saying about, you know, is it, one of your things was, is it gonna secure his job, a fifteen hundred dollar sale? What'd you sell last year in sales? Total sales last year?
Point two million.
One point two million it sells. Is fifteen hundred dollars gonna make him an employee or not? Hell no, all right? Question for you, if I donate the windows, does everybody go home? No contract, null and void, right?
Yeah, you can.
District can have you, but you spent five grand on it, five grand a part of the money that I paid for. Throw the contract away, throw to the districts. Thank you very much.
That's kind of a nice thing he did, right? Seth, when he talked in his whole speech, when he referred to Miller Glass, he said "we," which kind of leads us to believe that Seth must be part of, or part of Miller Glass.
Been there for a long time, so.
So to refer to it as "we" implies more than what we've gotten out of this.
I was trying to separate "we," Miller Glass, "we," the board, it was kind of hard to, I'm on two, I'm on two of the "we's" here, so.
And, um, and so I, I think that, that "we" is the public, uh, just want you to act in a manner that demonstrates integrity and, and transparency. You know, we only expect you to be absolutely perfect, except Ken Hunt would like him to straighten up, but, uh.
I think I am absolutely perfect.
My wife says I'm, my wife says I'm, I think I'm perfect.
Your wife talks behind your back, really.
I know.
And, so, uh, uh, you know, we just kind of want things done properly. And so, you know, we just kind of want things done properly. Most of the boards I'm on, if something like this comes up, the Seths would recuse themselves. They wouldn't get involved. And so I would suggest that's what you do in the future.
That's.
And that's a pretty simple, basic, easy way to handle all of this, and you don't have to.
I would almost bet with the last person you just heard from, we probably just permanently recused ourselves from.
Well, the board was not involved in this. Sepp didn't make a vote on this. And I'd like to ask a technical question since.
But Seth was aware, you see, but Seth was out making windows, giving advice, and I'm sure that in your go-to talk with the board.
I didn't measure any windows, I just looked at the plans.
On all this, that Seth knew you shouldn't get involved.
Right.
Because you did the spiel to all the board members, so.
Well, prior to this happening, there had been no spiel like that. We thought since I had no financial involvement in it, because I am not a commissioned employee, that me merely looking at the plans, I didn't do the quote, I didn't do the sale, that by me merely looking at the plans and making sure the windows slid the direction that I thought would be best, I was on the building committee. So, I've seen these plans for going on two and a half years, something, maybe plus, on there, so I wanted to make sure.
But so the public with transparency and integrity kind of looks at these things differently, Seth.
But, but we, I didn't look at the plans until after we won it, but I shouldn't have conversations, you're right.
Back and forth. Okay, I have somebody else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Betty Hanner, and I think that maybe you all are really missing the point to a great extent. I agree with what you said about setting out parameters on how things are to be handled. If that had been done before, the whole business with Seth having to write a letter, even stating in it that he was upset about the way that his.
Character.
Character, yeah, that's a good word, that his character had been dismerched. That would never have happened. This kind of thing, the board needs to think about, and it needs to make sure that it is protecting the board members, that it's giving them guidelines and that the board members can go by those guidelines so they don't get caught in something like this, so the public doesn't have to wonder about the board and what you're doing. If all of this had, I think you need to go ahead with what you're talking about. So it certainly doesn't happen in the future, and I think the public and a lot of these other people here need an apology for that not having been done sooner.
Thank you, Betty, your line.
Here's the problem as I see it. I just found out yesterday that Miller Glass had to bid for this. Now, George, of course, is in a bargaining agreement for this thirty thousand dollar raise. He's on, he's on the side that's procuring the windows. You're on the side, you're on the side that makes up your mind whether you're going to give him the raise. Obviously, there's two board members that's going to do it, and you should have, you should have, sir, declared publicly that your company was bidding on this a long time ago because you, by your own admission, know they was. And that's, that's what I see as the insult to the public, is when you, of course, every board member works for somebody, but when you work for somebody and your, and your company, especially a public company like this one, it takes bids from somebody and it's from, it's from a business that you're at, you have an obligation to disclose that to the public as soon as possible. And you didn't do that, sir, and so it looks like, it looks like it's a, it's a one hand washes the other deal, because obviously, we know how you're going to vote on the raise. So that's what I say. Thank you.
Anybody else? Is that the only bidder? Do you, do we still need to go into closed session before we make a decision?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
I'd like to speak before we go into closed session.
Well, I don't want you to speak before we go into closed session. You can speak after we come out, because I'm afraid you're going to say the wrong thing. I don't want, I don't want the district to be sued because of what you're saying in an open meeting.
No, the district won't be sued.
You don't know until you talk to our attorney in closed session.
Well, I've already talked to the attorney.
Right, but we have it all, the board has it as a whole.
The rest of the board has it. How long will the closed session take?
As long as we.
As long as the board wants it to stay.
Right.
Well, I will say at this point that I am going to recuse myself of that closed session and any vote or decision that you guys make.
I think you should be in there, though, to, no?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
I think you should get the.
I don't think I can learn anything from it.
I think you should get the advi, Sepp? I really think you should get the advice of the council before you.
Yeah, he can get.
I can see why you're excusing yourself.
I think you can get the advice after the fact, after we're given legal direction.
Okay.
Okay, so we will now go into closed session, the conference with the legal counsel, anticipated location, uh, litigating order, and we're coming out of closed session, and this is the announcement that's being made, the board's decision. In light of the possible violation of section ten ninety of the government code, the district will amend the purchasing policy to address this situation in the future. And rather than continue spending time and district money on this matter, the district accepts Miller's offer to donate the windows. And then now, we're going to discuss the press release that we're going to release to that night. Why don't you read it, George?
For consideration?
Right, for our consideration.
On February seventh, two thousand thirteen, the Board of Directors held a special meeting to discuss the purchase of windows for the new Corporation Yard buildings for Miller Glass. The district felt it was appropriate to notify the press and the public that Miller Glass did nothing wrong in this transaction, and the district appreciates its business and competitive prices. Miller Glass provided the low bid for the windows, competing with two other glass companies. Because of Miller Glass employee, Sepp Corolla is also a director of the district. There are additional requirements for bidding on district projects. Sepp Corolla did not directly benefit from the sale of the windows to the district. The Board of Directors determined that no intentional violations of law occurred, and the district will amend its purchasing policies to remove any doubt that possible future transactions with Miller Glass will comply with all applicable legal requirements.
Is there any discussion? Any, does anyone want to change or anything, or anything, or, okay, I entertain a motion to, to release this then?
I will move to release this press release.
I'll second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anybody in the public like to speak to the matter? Okay, roll call, please.
Director Plesch?
Here, yes.
Director Hess?
Yes.
Director Kellogg?
Yes.
Vice President Duncan?
Yes, and then, he, Sepp is abstaining.
Yes, I already said I was going to abstain from the decisions.
Okay, are there any directors' comments?
At this time, I'd like to make some comments. My job as a director is to represent the community. I've served on three different, or four different special districts, and in all that time, it was explained to me several times over, as a director, that I could not sell any products or goods to the district as a conflict of interest. If I worked for another company as an employee, I couldn't sell products or services as conflict of interest. We've had repeated training sessions on this, conflict of interest. I went through the process of, I didn't get the opportunity to ask Seth, did I get it right? I keep pronouncing it.
Seth.
Seth. At a training session we had about this, because I had to leave for business. I called attorney, asked him his opinion, David, who led this section. He didn't say, said any comments to Seth at the meeting that it was okay, he just was, let me look into it. Then I called Tuesday to Dustin, following week, of course, and got the impression that there's a great deal of possibility of this being a conflict of interest. And I insisted that we have, it was going to be discussed in a closed session, no public input. And that's the way it was, started to be scheduled. And I said, it has to be open, at least half of it. Dustin cost to me some more. And called me back and said, it will be open and closed. Is that satisfying you? And I said, yes. Closed part to be about legal issues and the open part to be about the, in my opinion, a violation of the conflict of interest rule. I said, it's going to be implied, I have the appearance of a conflict of interest, not just in the purchase of the windows, which isn't really that important to me, rather than it happened, and the way it happened, without the board's knowledge, going through the office with the procedures here and saying, okay, we're, Sepp is part of the committee that's overseeing George's negotiations with the board. It leaves to the appearance of conflict, that this has to be open so that people understand that there is no conflict, that Seth did this, just like the press release said, without the knowledge of the conflict. After all, it went across George's decks, and the way we do business here, George approves all the purchase orders. So I thought, well, George, why didn't George say something to him about it? But I didn't know you'd ask the attorney about it. And so I got that impression, and I thought, okay, this gets out in the community, and the community's watching every little thing that's going on here right now, that Sepp got the, Seth, one of these days, I'll get it right, and that I didn't want that to get built up and come around the corner. I wanted it open so that everybody knew what the process was and what it went about, so that the members of the community would know and understand about some of the inner workings of the district, and there was no intentions to do what could be implied from what happened. This was not a witch hunt on my part. I said to people that asked, I said, it has the appearance of something happening. I don't think it's happened, but it has appearance, and in this political climate with the district right now, where we're considering George's pay raise and all sorts of things on his job, that it shouldn't be put in a closed session and hidden from the public. I didn't want more heat coming on board members, the, out of the community, saying that they could possibly have certain things happen to them. Larry has told me about some of the phone calls he's had. So, it has come out that way because we had the open session. It's been explained about things, they've gone home early, Sepp is not accused of anything. The Miller Glass, I know Jim, he'll get over being angry, and I've talked to him on the phone, since this thing came out, and he told, talked to me about the news release and so forth. I've known him a long time. He's one of the owners of Miller Glass.
But if you closed it up, your five minutes are on.
My five minutes, probably is. This is, I'm being long-winded, aren't I? But this is how I got my foot in it and insisted it be open because of what's going on in the district and in the community right now. And I just want to be understanding about this. We have conflicts within the board that we work out, deal. I want to compliment Larry on his running of the meeting tonight, even though part of it was chewing my ass out, and that this board should learn from the experience.
That was done in closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. And I appreciate no attempt to keep me from speaking tonight about the whole issue. So my goal is to serve the community, and hopefully, we'll have the best district in the long run here. And we need to work out some kinks, but we're working on it. Thank you.
Sepp?
Thank Director Kellogg for his comments. I'm glad that this came out, actually, that way, future people that might serve on this board, that might own businesses or work for businesses, couldn't own a business, but work for a business, will be protected by this brought out. Had I known this was going to snowball into this, that there was some possibility of a violation, we would have walked away. We would have walked away, hands down. This is not a large enough sale. I think you got the general impression from my boss tonight, this is not large enough to make or break Miller Glass. He would rather see it, I think he'd rather see me be happy and him be happy than worry about fifteen hundred dollars. So I'm glad that, for the future, that we'll have some direction on this. I think that's very good.
Ken?
Contrary to what Director Kellogg says, if Director Kellogg would have brought this up through staff, indicating that he thought that there was a potential area of conflict, conflict of interest, staff would have done their own little investigation, really thought about it, and we would have done this at a total cost of maybe two or three hundred dollars in staff time, rather than going without, coming to the board, without coming to staff and bringing up your concern, going directly to the attorney's office, generating all of these billable hours of legal research, the investigation, additional legal time spent in discussing options, calling a special board meeting, having the attorney here at our board meeting, you know, and I may be wrong, maybe it doesn't cost us five thousand dollars, maybe it only costs us three thousand five hundred dollars, to discuss something that rightfully so, Bill, should have been brought up to the district and said, we have a little glitch in our procurement policy here, maybe there's something that we can do to tighten it up so that, especially as new board members come on, there's a disclosure about the nature of the business and ensure that the public is notified and we stay away from doing that type of business. I just don't think we needed to spend three or four or five thousand dollars of the ratepayers' money, which we will now have to recover in terms of being a part of any future rate increase, because that's an expense that this district should not have had to go through. And I think that if we would work together at the board, discuss things together, discuss things through staff, that we would have come to the same end. That's my comment.
Doug?
Well, I think one of the key things on a board, and I was certainly elected by you people with a pretty wide landslide, is transparency, and that's what we'll bring, and sometimes that could be a costly, time-consuming process, and I think that's one of the things here that came out, and we'll certainly start working on it, where that we can have transparency right here on top of the table with us. Anybody that, I don't think anybody here had a hidden agenda, but we don't want anybody to have a hidden agenda. Communications is the name of the game, and on my part, I'll certainly work on it with you people. I have nothing but the most respect for the other four board members, and I know what they're after, is to better serve this district for the health and the success and the future of this district, which has been around for a long time, and it's getting better all the time. All you got to do is take a glass of water today and take one back in forty-three, there's quite a difference.
Okay, my comments are, I think it's a bad law, unfortunately. Ten percent of the people who are crooked make us have the other laws that make it, make it where people who unintentionally get caught up in things, because I don't think any, a lot of these things were, shouldn't even be a problem. Just the way that our laws go, and I'm really not in favor of them, but I didn't. It's just the way that our laws go, and I'm really not in favor of them, but I didn't pass them. Any more discussion? We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all for.